All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 12th, 2022, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask the Commission Secretary, Andy Smith, to please call the roll.
Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Strongman?
Here.
Vice Chair Ward?
Here.
Chair Reiser?
Here.
And Commissioner Anderson is absent tonight. We have a quorum with six.
Thank you, Andy. Next up on our agenda is the consent calendar, and seeing no consent calendar, I'll move on to public communications. The public communication portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. At this time, does anybody in the chamber wish to speak on the public comment, public communications portion of the meeting, items not on the agenda? Seeing none here, I'll see if we have anybody online raising their hand.
There we go, the button works there. No, we do not have anybody raising their hand.
Terrific. Moving right along, the next item on our agenda is public hearings, and we'll start by asking if any member of the Commission has had any ex parte communications related to items on this evening's agenda, not including staff, outside of staff. Anybody? Seeing shaking heads, we'll go to our first public hearing of Project 2670 and 2680 Walnut Boulevard subdivision, major subdivision, requested waivers pursuant to state density bonus law, design review, tree removal permit, and tree drip line encroachment permit, application Y21024, and we'll turn it over to Haley Crawford, Senior Planner. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Haley Crawford, Senior Planner here with Walnut Creek, and tonight I'll be presenting a project at 2670 and 2680 Walnut Boulevard for a 13-lot single-family subdivision. The project before you tonight is requesting to demolish two existing single-family homes and all associated accessory structures to build a new 13-lot subdivision with 13 new single-family homes. Two of those 13 homes will be designated for low-income units. Therefore, the applicant is also utilizing state density bonus law and gets a bonus by providing 20% low-income units of three bonus units on site. They are also provided, or allowed to request waivers of development standards in order to achieve that development and that density. They are proposing 14 waivers as part of the request tonight, and I'll go into more detail on those. And the project is also being reviewed under SB 330. So the kind of general entitlement and process to date, the project has been to the Design Review Commission for a study session, and is before the Planning Commission tonight seeking action on the SEQA exemption, the subdivision, the density bonus waivers, and tree removal and drip line encroachment. If approved tonight, it will require final design review approval from the Design Review Commission. So now I'll go into a little bit of detail on the site. This map here, the yellow star just shows where we are at City Hall. The site is just northeast of City Hall, shown in the red arrow, is currently in the general plan, single-family medium-density, general plan designation, and is zoned single-family R10. The entire site together, both parcels, is one and a half acres. As I mentioned, the existing site contains two single-family homes and some accessory structures. Here's just some images showing the existing condition. Both of those will be demolished in an existing site plan. I do want to point out that Homestead Creek runs along the south and east portions of the lot, and as, because of that, the applicant has made efforts to design around the creek and will not be touching it as part of their proposal. So we'll be leaving it in its existing condition, including the trees that are located in the creek. However, they were required, the city required them to do some hydrology analysis to study the existing conditions of that creek and then the proposed conditions with this development under a 10-year storm event. And the report was included in the packet. I've just put an image up here, but the, I'll just summarize the conclusion, that there's no change in the water surface elevation in the creek from pre-project to post-project conditions. So essentially, this project will not impact that creek and the drainage in the area. And so because of that, staff recommends that the Commission find that this project meets the Class 32 infill exemption, as it's consistent with the general plan and zoning. It's on a site less than five acres in size. There is no value as a habitat for endangered plant or animal species, and will not, the project will not generate any significant impacts to traffic, noise, air, or water quality. And finally, it's a site that's served by all utilities. So as I mentioned, they're utilizing state density bonus tonight. The base density for the site, as it is today, with a 1.5-acre size, would accommodate 10 units per our general plan. The applicant is providing 20%, so two homes to be low-income, designated for low-income levels, and that allows them a 35% increase in density, which would allow a maximum of 14 units on site. They are proposing 13 units, so they are in compliance with the state density bonus allowed density. And as I mentioned, they are requesting waivers. This should say 14. I apologize, not 13. They're requesting 14 waivers from standards in order to construct that density. And the density bonus allows them to request waivers in order to, or waivers that would otherwise physically preclude them from constructing that density. And I'll just highlight here that, under the density bonus law, the city and the Commission is therefore required to allow the waivers of such standards unless specific findings are made that any of those waivers would have a specific adverse impact on the health, safety, or physical environment. Staff has analyzed the waivers requested. There's a summary in your packet tonight, and has not found that any of those waivers would have an impact on the health, safety, or physical environment, but it's an action tonight for the Planning Commission. Here's just a summary of those requested waivers. This table was also included in your staff report. I'll just quickly summarize what they are. Minimum lot size, so this table shows, obviously, the required, so 10,000 square feet required, and then they're proposing a minimum of 3,000 square feet for all lots. They're also asking for reductions in lot width, frontage, and depth. And then they are seeking waivers from the front yard setback from 20 feet to four feet, the side yard setbacks and the aggregate setbacks from five feet minimum to three and a half feet on the sides, and then similar, a corner side setback just for those two front corner lots, 10 feet. They're asking a waiver, a waiver to four feet. They are also asking for a waiver from the maximum lot coverage. They're proposing a 52% lot coverage, where 35% would be allowed. And then they're also requesting waivers from some street standards. The street serving this development would be maintained as a private road because it does not meet the city's street standards. However, I'll point out that the various outside agencies, including fire, have reviewed the plans and have found that there's no impact to emergency services that they're still able to access based on the reduced size of the streets. They're also not providing any on-street parking on the interior street. I will note, though, that there is some on-street parking on Walnut Boulevard that will be provided with this project. And then finally, they are asking for a waiver from the curb and gutter to a beveled curb design. So now I'll get into a little bit of the details on our SB 330, the other state law that's at play here. SB 330 dictates here that a city, again, cannot deny a project that complies with all objective standards unless it's found that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, and similarly cannot impose conditions that would reduce the density or impact the permitted housing units for this project. SB 330 also sets some other restrictions, such as limiting the number of public hearings to five for this project. Tonight would be the second public hearing, including that DRC study session. So staff has reviewed the project against all of our objective standards and our zoning ordinance, as well as our objective design review standards, and has found that the project is in compliance and therefore is being reviewed under SB 330. So given all of that context now, I'll go into a little detail of the plans. This here before you is just the proposed vesting tentative map plan, showing the location of the 13 lots with that center private street with the hammerhead at the end, a budding lot six, seven, and eight. There, each of the homes has two, a two-car garage, and then there's also six guest parking provided on the property itself. And then parcel B, shown at the, this might be a little easier to see, I'm at the upper corner of the site plan, is the bioretention facilities. They are proposing two varied floor plans, a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom unit, and then two different elevation types to allow some variability in both the homes and the facade designs, and that is required as part of our objective design standards. So here are the locations of Plan One, and then the alternates are then the location of Plan Two. And then I'll just point out here, the yellow stars are the location of the two low-income units. Those are spread out in terms of, there's one three-bedroom and one four-bedroom, so there's a, it represents the project equally. One of each is provided. I touched on parking a little bit, but I did want to mention this as, as it has been a concern that's been brought up to staff. So the code requires, for single-family homes, that two covered parking stalls be provided. So the applicant is meeting that by providing two car garages for each home. They are then providing additional six guest parking stalls in that southeast corner of the lot. And then there, as part of the project, they're also required to do some frontage improvements, including a sidewalk along Walnut Boulevard, and the, that will allow for six additional parking stalls along Walnut Boulevard, similar to the condition of the townhome development that is to the south. And I've included just a picture just to show how that existing is today, and that'll, that condition will continue, and this project will connect into that. The last item before the Planning Commission tonight is the tree removals. The applicant is proposing to remove 23 trees on site to accommodate the proposed project. 10 of those are considered highly protected trees. If the Commission does approve the highly protected trees, staff is recommending a condition of approval that the, the valuation of those highly protected trees, which is $102,730, be paid by the applicant to our Tree and Lou fund. The code requires, or allows the option of either payment into a fund or the actual replacement of trees on site, but given the density and the waivers that are already being requested, staff feels that payment into the fund rather than putting the trees on site would be best suited for this development. I touched upon the frontage improvements a little bit, but I did just want to include this plan here, so you could also see that as part of the improvements, there'll also be new street trees planted along Walnut Boulevard, as well as some trees also within the internal to the development itself. So I did mention that this went before the Design Review Commission's for a study session back in October. The DRC did express some concerns with the proposed density site layout in the building design, and acknowledged that while the waivers were necessary to achieve the density, that they did result in a tight site layout with some homes that are relatively close together. Ultimately, the DRC did direct staff and the applicant to move the project forward to the Planning Commission without a formal recommendation from the DRC. I do also just want to mention that I've received 13 public comment letters prior to the meeting. Copies of all of those have been sent to the Commissioners. There were a few that came in after five. Copies of those have since been provided at your location now, as well as provided at the back for any members of the public. And so finally, I'll conclude with staff's recommendation tonight. So staff is recommending that the Commission move to adopt the attached draft resolution, which would approve the major subdivision, the density bonus, tree removal, and tree drip line encroachment permits for the 13-lot subdivision. I did want to add that staff is recommending an additional condition of approval be added, and this is simply just for clarification. We realize that the conditions of approval address an HOA, and that an HOA will be maintaining the private road in the bioretention area, but that there was, could be some added clarity that a HOA must be established. And so just to add that clarity, staff's recommending a condition be added that prior to the recordation of the final map, that a copy of the CCNRs will be provided to staff just to verify establishment of the HOA and their responsibilities. So that's the only addition to your packet tonight. And so with that, I'm here for questions, and I do know the applicant's team is here with a presentation as well.
Great, appreciate it. Thanks, Haley. Nice presentation. I'm going to bring it back to the Commissioners for questions, and I see Commissioner Lezak raise his hand first.
Thank you for the presentation. Excellent staff report. I'm going to just dig into a couple of very key items that I think are important to this conversation. Seems to me that the review of this application hinges upon the words "specific adverse impact upon public health or safety." So I'll have a follow-up on this one, but can you describe in a little bit more detail staff's process to evaluate this? I mean, it seems like the, this is the key item staff had to evaluate in determining all of this application. Read what you've said in the staff report, but you had to have gone through every one of these things in great detail. Without maybe going through every one of them, can you talk about that a little bit more? more?
Sure. So looking at that list of waivers, maybe helpful to pull up, but the main, the first step, we route all of our applications to the outside agencies, fire obviously being one of the key ones, to make sure that fire, that, you know, fire access has been provided, and that, and just general emergency access has been provided with this application. So that's the kind of main key first step that we had to do. And as I mentioned, fire did approve the plan with that hammerhead turned around. So access is kind of the first step. And then looking at, you know, the lot size and the lot dimensions, the, essentially the requested lot size and the waivers from that are just simply asking for smaller lots that, you know, staff feels that there really is no impact to the safety. And that includes both, you know, the project itself and then the residents. Similarly to setbacks, one of the key actually things on this project is the creek on-site as well. And so, you know, looking at that, and so staff did look and make sure that adequate setbacks from the creek were provided, and that access to the creek would still be provided, both for emergency situations, but also just for general maintenance. And then finally, the hydrology analysis was another piece that we requested to make sure that with this, the density, and obviously the waivers allow the density, that we would not be impacting the current creek on-site, the drainage in the area, and not leading to, you know, additional flooding concerns or anything like that, that the site itself would be fully able to maintain its runoff. And so those are kind of the key, at least for this specific project, the key steps we went through. Engineering also was heavily involved, our engineering division, in review of this, and specifically in the street standards. And so some of them, you know, looking at on-street parking, that's a little bit more of an obvious one, maybe, because, you know, removing the on-street parking along the street while the applicant was also providing six stalls for guests, that was almost like an even trade. And then engineering felt that the minimum roadway width and such was also, because access was still able to be provided, that they felt that there was no safety concerns. I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I guess, you know, from my perspective, the staff had to evaluate and provide us information to make or not make two different findings. And the one is, this is the most important, that there is no specific adverse impact upon public health and safety. And then I guess the second one that I'd like you to just briefly mention has to do with this, that it complies with all the objective standards, including the city's objective design standards. I mean, in order to evaluate that, what process did you go through?
So the city has an objective design standards checklist, which outlines all of our, it's all of our existing design guidelines, which have been adopted by city council back in 1996. It's all of the ones that are written objectively. So we, under state law, cannot require that they comply with subjective ones. So we've pulled out the objective ones. We have an objective design standards checklist, and that's also what was part of DRC's review too. And so that speaks a lot to kind of variability in design of the homes being presented. It speaks to materials and colors, things like that. And so it's simply a checklist that staff goes through, looks at the plans. It also addresses some landscaping as well. But if it checks the box, then it meets the objective standard.
So the design review commission can't say, "I don't really like that there's not a lot of setback differences, that there are only two plan types, I don't like that color." All of those level of subjective design review doesn't apply to this project, only the objective standards that you reviewed?
That's correct. I'll just add that there is, with the nuance that they could not, the condition, let's say that they wanted to impose a condition, could not impact the density. You know, paint colors, you know, maybe requesting some darker tone paint colors or introducing a new paint color, things like that, you know, I guess I'll also confirm with our city attorney, but, you know, there are a little bit of wiggle room in that sense, but ultimately we always have to go back to the fact that we can't impose subjective conditions that would impact the density, and that includes the financial feasibility. So requiring a expensive material might fall under that category, too.
Okay, so one last one on my end, and maybe this is a legal question for the attorney. So based on these two state laws that the project, according to the information you're providing, complies with, does the planning commission have any discretion? I mean, it seems to me, based on my understanding of this, no matter what public testimony there is, no matter, you know, unless I can personally make some finding that's different from what you are, it seems to me that the planning commission must approve this project. Is that, is that accurate?
When you, when you take all of that and you get down to what the standard is for the commission, you can look at it in two steps. One is, would denial of one of the waivers physically preclude development at that same density? So that's one, that's one aspect of it. So you would have to find that if you were to deny one of the waivers, you would need to find that that doesn't preclude development at the required density. And then secondly, on top of that, you would also have to make the other specific finding that it does have an impact to public safety or welfare.
And we'd have to make that finding?
You would have to make that-
In order to deny-
In addition, you would have to make that finding, and it's worth noting that under state density bonus law, the burden of proof in the city making that finding is on the city, not the developer.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have for now. Anybody else? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on that. There was a comment about the waivers and making the project infeasible, and our city attorney said had to do with density. Yet you could develop the same density with considerably smaller units and achieve some of the standards, the setbacks or whatever. It could still be done at the density. It's the unit design, which is subjective on the applicant's part, to arrive at this development plan. So what's to preclude us to say, "You can have the density, you can have 13 units, but we don't want them that big"? Is that within the realm of the planning commission authority?
You would still have to make that second finding that the, the initial project as proposed, or, you know, granting one of those waivers, you would still have to find that denying that is due to the fact that it has a specific adverse effect on public health and safety.
So public health and safety is the overbearing-
Right. It's in addition, it's in addition to not, it's not either or, you would have to make both of those findings, still.
You have to make both. You can't do one or the other.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strongman?
I'd like to go back to the hydrology a little bit. This is awfully a dense project, and we've, you've analyzed and said there's no, it won't increase the possibility of flooding. But if we continue developing the rest of that neighborhood at this higher density, for example, with SB 9, each of the people on Jerome Court can put four units on their property without, we have no say in that, too. At what point do we actually trip the potential of a flood?
I'm going to see if Representative for Engineering Division come up, come up here.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Tierentief with the City of Walnut Creek Engineering Department. So pretty much any development, even like an SB 9 lot split, meets the subdivision requirements, and they would have to meet the same standard as this project, that the pre-project, that the post-project 10-year peak flow would have to meet the pre-project. So they would have to detain runoff so that there's no increase in the runoff from the, from the project.
Okay, so they've actually retained it on their property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another question on, since these are two-story houses, proposed impact on somebody else's salt panels, solar panels? Do we have anything in our codes or anything like that that would help the person that now all of a sudden has a shade problem?
No, we don't have anything specifically to that, and I will also just point out that that two-story, 25-foot height limit is a consistent allowance for any of our single-family zones. So it's, it's a universal allowance for a single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for now? Okay. I just have one really quick question. It very well could have been asked of the builder as well, but just, I didn't see it in their trash. How does the trash, how is the trash proposed to be collected or placed for pickup?
Well, this might work. So it's, it's, there's a location for trash inside of each of the resident's garage, and then the Republic Services has also reviewed the plans, and they, essentially the trash will be, bins will be placed out along the, their, the street, and then similar to any other kind of standard neighborhood, Republic Services will, their truck can fit down the street and then use that hammerhead at the end. So they will pick up every individual trash. There's not like a shared trash enclosure.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that's it for our questions right now, so we will open the public hearing, and the applicant now has 15 minutes to give their presentation.
I'm Don Ricky. I'm with Dollin Group Architects, and I'm here as a representative for the development team. Wanted to say that, as you're aware, that the general plan designation for the single-family medium density is a project that's zoned R10 with 10,000 lot, 10,000 square foot lot minimums. Those 10,000 square foot lot minimums also have a standard 80-foot wide by 100-foot deep minimum lot requirement. Our site is approximately 71,000 square feet in change gross and about 65,000 square feet in net after deducting the dedication for the widening of Walnut. Keep in mind, the net area is further reduced when you deduct the common area for the bio and the bio-retention, and also for the private street right away. If we were trying to forward this project as a zoning, with, and have it be zoning compliant, we would have only been able to get about four lots on the site. Given the current shortage of new and affordable by design market rate housing in Walnut Creek, it was the conscientious choice to explore smaller, higher-density homes rather than build four, 5,000-square-foot semi-custom homes on this lot. As we started to explore our options under the state density bonus law, which allowed up to 14 units of the site by including two medium affordable units, starting in early 2020, and over the course of multiple submittals and working with staff, we settled on 13 units. Given the constraints, we believe we arrived at a sensible, thoughtful solution which works with, for the landowner, the developer, and the community. Some of the positives of the site, and actually what I want to do is just kind of run through really quickly some of the history, just so you can kind of see where we've been on the site. So back in 2020, this is our, this, from February of 2020, this was one of the first ones we looked at. This was a seven-unit plan developed on the site. This was a nine-unit plan with four to, 4,000 to approximately 9,000 square foot lots, the biggest one being in the upper right-hand corner. And then here is another plan where we had 12 units, and we had lots that ranged from 2,700 square feet to about 5,500 square feet. So that was where we started. Then we went to the PRT submittal, where we settled on 14 units, started talking to staff, realized that we'd be back to 13 units. So this was our first submittal to the city, actually with 14 units still, was our first full submittal. And then after that, we arrived at the site plan you see now, that's, that's here tonight, of cour, over the course of five submittals. So there was a lot of thought that went into this, and a lot of trying to be thoughtful to the neighbors. We know that the people on Jerome Court have been used to a nice, open lot behind them and some, some trees, and we were trying to be as sensitive as we could. So some of the ways we started to go about, and to try to go about and include that were, we tried to pull the garages to the front and shorten up the street. So rather than having standard driveway aprons, which would have pushed the homes back, shortened the backyards, and pushed the homes closer to the people on, especially on the north side, we chose to go with a small apron and have no street parking, and narrow our street section to a 20-foot drive aisle, which is sufficient for fire, and then push our guest parking, which actually isn't required for the property, back behind, on the, on the rear of the site, so it's not seen from Walnut, and it's kind of around the corner, so it wouldn't impact the street of the, the entry street coming in or the view. Given the site constraints, we thought we arrived at a pretty sensible, thoughtful solution, which worked for everybody. All the homes have been thoughtfully designed with their backyards abutting the neighbors, and it was the intention of the design team to try to maintain as many existing features of the site as possible. Initially, we tried keeping the existing tree on the front side of the property, but over the course of talking with the neighbors, and especially the Millers in the back right corner, they have some trees on their property which actually grow over into our property, and the, we thought that the best thing to do was to preserve their trees, so we pulled the homes back on the back row to the south and put the bio-retention there to increase the, the amount of setback to the rear home, to their home, and, and try to give them as much buffer as possible. We were able to preserve the creek feature as is, maintaining an important natural element within the site and ensuring no additional flow from the creek. The small lot, two-story, single-family homes provide a natural transition to the attached condominiums to the south and the detached homes on Jerome Court, which are on wider lots and, and more of a traditional single-family with bigger, with bigger homes. The architecture of the homes reflects the residential context of the site. The two-story homes are traditional in appearance and mimicking the neighborhood feel and style, but built using the most modern and sustainable materials. This development is designed to fit seamlessly and preserve the residential quality of this neighborhood, and we think we achieved this through homes that were designed with traditional styles, colors, materials, and provided the best fit in the context of the surrounding In summary, the proposed development will be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, transforming an underutilized parcel into a much-needed housing, the scale and type of which is appropriate for this location. And then I am concluding my presentation and available for any questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, who maintains the creek?
The creek is, the creek is main, that's a good question. The HOA will maintain the creek.
Okay, so there'll be a structure, maybe somebody else needs to answer, the structure of the HOA would have dues, and they would have a-
Yeah, the street is private-
... maintenance program?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The, the street is private, and so is the bio-retention area, is all part of the HOA, and, and so is the creek.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner needing?
I have a few questions, but it probably is more for engineering, water, and the biologist. I don't know if the biologist is here, but engineering could probably answer it. Well, the first, the first thing I just quickly want to ask is, do you know how the top of bank was set? Was that from the biologist?
Yes, I believe, so, my name is-
Could you kindly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. My name's Justin Joseph. I'm with Carlson, Barbie, and Gibson. I'm the civil engineer on the project, part of the applicant team. So to your question for the top of bank, I believe there was a biologist that went out there and marked the top of bank location and was able to place flags. And as part of our surveying and topography, topography for the area, we went ahead and marked the top of bank locations, as that was a key component- top of bank locations as that was a key component in maintaining a setback for the buildings.
I guess the only reason why I ask is I, when I reviewed Oberding's report, it shows the swale and it shows the ephemeral drainage.
Mm-hmm.
A wetland delineation, it seems, wasn't completed. And around the swale and the ephemeral drainage, which may or may not be jurisdictional in nature, according to his report, is surrounded by a riparian, and so that's what I asked. Typically riparian vegetation, from CDFW's perspective, it actually adds to, the edge of the riparian is actually the edge of the top of bank. So that would just be one thing that I would look into your plans, because if you do happen to touch the top of bank, you're talking about a stream and lake bed alteration agreement, which you and I know exactly what that means. The other thing is, so you're also doing an outfall. There's an existing one and a new one. And so my question is, is, has that, that for sure would need, I believe, resource permits, resource agency permits. Are you guys planning on obtaining, which I believe in that case would technically be a lake and stream bed, depending on what, how CDFW looks at it?
Sure, yeah. I think as, as part of the project, we are taking all our stormwater to our treatment facility, and we are discharging it through a new outfall. The biologist is in the process of obtaining those permits and applying for those permits with CDFW and-
Regional water quality-
Regional, yeah, all the, all the appropriate jurisdictions required to construct an outfall of that size.
And so, and in those permits, not sure if you're going to get a federal nexus or not, if it's a 404, but then assuming that they would require 401, 404, 1600, so then they would check, in, in that you'll just make sure that the homes and however they're built, that they're just out of those areas, or the appropriate resource permits would be obtained?
Yeah, I, I think through the process of permitting with all those different agencies, I think there'd be a review process which we would incorporate and include as part of our plan moving forward.
Okay, and then, because I did notice some of the riparian trees within the bank, which also require permits, okay. And then the other question I had from a hydrology standpoint is, when I was reading the, when I was reading the Schaaf and Wheeler report, I, I may have read this wrong, but when it's, it says, "And model result, uh, results under the FEMA boundary condition", it shows that in the last three cross-sections, that the water surface elevations are not maintained in the channel and cross over the site?
Yes, so as part of this hydrology memo, city staff, engineering, the applicant team, the applicant team went, hired an outside consultant, Schaaf and Wheeler, and the city also hired their outside consultant, HEI. They kind of came together to determine what the parameters would be for the hydrology study. So as a conservative approach, there was a FEMA model done that included a conservative boundary condition, which was about that 120.5 elevation. Taking a look at those elevations, that elevation is actually almost at or above the top of bank, and it was based off a previous FEMA study. So in those last downstream sections, there is a small amount of overtopping which goes towards the project site, but the delta in the water surface elevation is a tenth of an inch. So due to matching the pre-project condition and flows, we are effectively maintaining the existing condition today.
So I know that Contra Costa only requires the, the 10-year flood, but, but the homes will be safe from the 100-year with this development, right?
Currently, the FEMA floodplain map shows the area or property in question out of the 100-year floodplain. So our intention is to maintain that same process, and we've left the proposed grades very similar to the existing grades as to not create a large amount of fill, and are ensuring that the finished floors of the homes are a foot above the current existing site grades.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Ward, Vice Chair Ward, sorry.
Okay. So my question's about the HOA, so it may actually be a question for the city attorney. When I looked at the project, I was concerned about enforcement of the, maintaining the street, the drainage, the parking, and how that would be paid for, you know, with, and the creek apparently as well. So thank you for including in our new resolution that there would be an HOA as a condition of approval for, for this, and I think that was implied by the map, but not entirely clear by the, the resolution that we are looking at. My question is, is it specific enough just to say, we're going to have an HOA, or do we need to be more specific with regard to the maintenance obligations and the enforcement obligations about parking and the like? Because if somebody doesn't have that authority, then it's going to become a free-for-all on that, so. I, I, I don't know the answer to that, it's actually, you know, that's why I'm looking at Brian.
Right, you can be more specific, meaning, you know, you can have a condition that requires the establishment of an HOA, and you can be more specific about what types of things that HOA should be in the business of enforcing. Ultimately, a, and you could, and you can also, in that condition, provide for the right of the city to enforce those provisions, but not the obligation to do so, if that makes sense.
It does. I, I just, I just wasn't sure if that was legally adequate for us to make sure that all those very important kind of capital projects that are included with, as privately owned and maintained projects, were going to be sufficiently maintained and, and enforced, and that the governance of them would be sufficiently enforced by just a general, you have to set up an HOA.
If I may through the chair, actually, Mrs. Crawford has, like to speak to, address, there are actually a number of conditions of approval that assign responsibilities to the HOA.
Okay. Yep, so if you look on the draft resolution, which is Attachment 1, page, oh, there's no page numbers on these, I apologize, Condition 35, or Condition 36 specifically speaks to the maintenance and inspection plan for the stormwater operations and maintenance agreements for inspection requirements of the creek. And it speaks specifically to, also to the CCNRs, shall clearly prohibit the construction of any structures within the creek section. So we've, we've outlined several conditions where assigning responsibilities to HOA. The reason for that added condition is simply because we realized we never, although it's implied, to your point, we never just made it clear that this HOA had to be established. And so that was, that's the only reason for making it, making it more clear. And so hopefully, I guess we can go through and make sure that, that we're not missing, you know, in, in those specific conditions, I, I believe that they've all been addressed, all of the maintenance concerns.
Okay, so the maintenance, I, I think you're probably right with regard to the maintenance of the, the streets, the creek, and everything that goes along with that. I am concerned about the parking situation because there is a concern that there's no other place for people to park, and I know that the residents can be required to park in their garages. And then, do we need to specify that those are guest parking only, or is that level specificity not required? And do we need to make sure that the HOA is, it's clear that they are going to be regulating that because if we don't, and there's an issue with parking, everybody's kind of stuck because it's private property, and, you know, you call the city to say, oh, there's this car that's not supposed to be there, and they say, sorry, it's on private property, and then the HOA doesn't have responsibility for it, they're like, can't do anything about it. So it, it just can fall into kind of a no-man's-land, and parking is always an issue, particularly in this neighborhood, so I, I, I don't know. It's probably fine, I mean, the maintenance and the, the, seems to be addressed adequately. I just, there's issues with parking that aren't strictly maintenance, they're more in the area of enforcement and governance.
I guess in, in direct answer to your question, yes, you can have a condition that states that, you know, the bylaws of the HOA shall provide that, you know, those parking spaces are designated as guest parking only, and, and you can have a provision that provides or, you know, states that the HOA shall enforce that provision, and again, provides the city with the right to enforce that provision, but not the obligation to do so.
Okay, I mean, we want it in the CCNRs for sure, but I, so would this be something Design Review can, can deal with, or is it something that we have to deal with at this level, in terms of?
I, I think one of the, it, it can be either.
I would, there's, it is a little bit of ambiguity in the code, but I would say that this more clearly falls under the, under the purview of the Planning Commission than it does the Design Review Commission.
Okay, so I might suggest that maybe we need to add something into that resolution to, to say that the HOA would have the obligation to enforce the, the parking situation there as well, in addition to the, maintaining the actual physical capital improvements that are located on the site. Okay, I, I think that my question regarding the hydrology was already answered, so that's all I have for now, thanks.
Any other commissioner questions? All right, at this time, this is the public hea, this is the members of the public wishing to provide public, public comment at this time, part of the public hearing, so I, I watched the entirety of the Design Review Commission meeting on this very subject, so I know that there's some folks that are here to speak, and so we'll start it off in here. I'm going to remind everybody that we have three minutes, I'd like to ask that we are respectful of the time to let everybody get their voice heard, and then I'm sure we have a number of people on the phone as well, so. The phone, the phone line is going to work very similar to how our city council is, it's three minutes, it's just simply cut, so at least I just simply ask that we respect the three-minute time limit. Thank you. If you could state your name when you come to the AMBO, state your name and-
My name is Greg Moran, and I live at 11 Jerome Court. And three of the units would be along my line, two stories, and then there would be two units on the next-door property, so there would be five units looking in my backyard. I used to live in Riverside, California, and I lived in an apartment, and I really liked being outside better. I knew this woman who lived in a house, and she had children, and I went over there a lot, and I would like, I liked to be in the backyard of her, I could relax, I could sit in the chair. She didn't have two-story houses. There was this little girl next door, and she liked to visit her son. And her son rejected the little girl, and so this smell, there was a swing set by the wall next to their house, and there's this smell, and, and it was really strong, and their trash, I, I peeked over the fence, and their trash was right next to the fence, they, they put all their kitchen, their kitchen stuff in the trash, and then they put a cardboard box in the trash, and the lid didn't shut all the way. This, this was continuously, almost every day, for about four months. After about four months, the woman I know wanted to move closer to work, so I, that's what she said to me. And about two weeks before she moved, by the way, if I went to the other side of the yard, there was a German Shepherd dog that would bark, so I couldn't sit over there. And I liked to play in the swing set with her son, and, you know, they didn't like that, so they, they opened up the trash for us. And so then she moved to another, a few miles away where there was a, after, in a, two weeks before she moved, all of a sudden the trash smelled good again. Then she moved to a different address, and there was a two-story house next to her, and she had a one-story house, and I, they were growing a pumpkin plant in the backyard. And I noticed how the pumpkin leaves died, you know, they turned brown, and then the new leaves were green, and I had an idea, what if I took the pumpkin brown, pumpkin leaves and I burned them, and I sprinkled the ash on the green pumpkin leaves, would it grow better? Well, I didn't work, but while I was trying it, I looked up at the balcony of the two-story house next door, and the sky was looking down at me like I was trying to get high on pumpkin leaf smoke, but I wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, if I could through the chair, just ask the speakers if they, if they would mind, please provide a speaker card, just so we have record if it was, provide a comment tonight, thank you.
And one other tip, maybe the follow, the speaker following to this, we can either line up against that left side there, or if the speaker on deck, anybody coming after the current speaker would simply step over to behind the current speaker, that would be appreciated, thank you, please.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Miller, my family lives at 55 Jerome Court, adjacent to the proposed development. I'd like to highlight concerns and propose some solutions. The most pressing concern is drainage for the entire one-and-a-half-acre lot will funnel, funnel water to the northeast corner, to a retention basin, which essentially is a box of rocks. Currently, the rain collects evenly throughout the entire lot, and now it exits, and it exits through an irrigation ditch. On page eight of the hydrology report, it states that there are no significant impacts to the water surface elevations across the project site, but they do not address how the concentrated, fire hose-like water flow from the 18-inch overflow pipe into a soft dirt wall of the ditch will cause both erosion and flooding. To quantify this, a good storm can produce one inch of rain. Over a one-and-a-half-acre lot, that's over 40,000 gallons. Walnut Creek on average has five months a year with three inches or more rainfall, with an annual average of 25 inches, which is over 1 million gallons of water. Flooding will impact five Jerome Courthouses and two Carra Courthouses. Any flooding will affect the integrity of the Jerome Court Bridge, and we don't want the problem created by the developer to become a liability for the HOA or the city. Concentrating the drainage into one spot is a new problem the developer is creating. So I propose the developer could create cement walls along the ditch from the overflow pipe to the Carra Court drains. This seems like the most reasonable mitigation from the developer, and much cheaper than the alternative of having to divert half the water towards Walnut Boulevard. I request that the exact specifications for the detention basin be provided to the Walnut Creek City Engineer for review ahead of the Design Review Commission meeting for this project. There are flooding implications, and having two houses three feet below grade of the lot, it will likely result in standing water under our houses. This is a health and safety concern for our families. Furthermore, on page five of the hydrology report, it states, "The site proposes detention basin at cross-section 1,000 that is given ineffective flow area as a detention basin would be full during a 10-year storm event." If the developer's own engineer calls it ineffective, shouldn't the design be further reviewed? Thank you for taking the comments under consideration, I appreciate the time of the Planning Commission, and I urge you to defer any approval until more information is available. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Anybody else here in the chamber? All right, turn it over to the Commission Secretary, anybody online?
Uh, yes, we, oh, it looks like we actually have some more in-person speakers.
Come on down.
My name is Janet Miller, I live at 55 Jerome Court, and when I hear about things like this in other towns, I'm always personally a little grateful that it's not in my backyard, but unfortunately, this proposal is right in my backyard. So our backyard backs up to these lots, and I sent my previous speech from October to you through Haley, hopefully you received it, where the Design Commission unanimously disapproved the proposed plan of the developers, and I wanted to share the negative impacts with this commission that it would have on our neighborhood. First, the obvious, 13 houses. When the architect got up and showed the plan of four houses, that sounds great, let's do that. But personal gain, build four houses, that's great, we have been spoiled with open lots, and we know they need to develop it, but keep it with what other developers have done in our neighborhood with five to six houses on similar-sized lots. Walnut Creek has done its, more than its fair share of building in the past few years, so I think enough is enough. The second negative impact this would have is the safety of our neighborhood. Walnut Boulevard is the main street for students to walk to and from WCI. Walnut Boulevard is the main street for students to walk to and from WCI. Adding the residents of 13 homes entering onto that street, right at a bend of the road, is asking for an accident or tragedy. Now that we know there's going to be parking on the street, I think that's even more, how are these people going to parallel park, when, if you've ever been down Walnut between 8:00 a.m., or again, in the late afternoon, it's stopped. So, I just kind of giggled picturing people trying to throw it in reverse and parallel park. It's not going to happen. But these homes are going to be packed onto 1.5 acres, the driveways are not even big enough to park a car, so residents are going to have to park in their garages, which most Californians do not do, and I don't know any Californians who put their trashcans in their garage either. This new street does not provide the parking, so I just could see that these residents are going to be parking on other streets off of Walnut, and then jaywalking across Walnut to get to their cars, I think that's another accident waiting to happen. The waiver to cut 23 trees is also a concern, especially when 10 of them are highly protected. What does it mean that protected if a builder can just walk in and cut them down? Why does our neighborhood have to lose the aesthetics of 200-year-old trees? I mean, the trees are 200 years old, so that the developer can build more houses. My biggest concern, oh shoot, I'm out of time, is the flooding. I live right next to the creek, when I signed my papers 20 years ago, it was shared with me that before the 80s, our house did flood, but the city of Walnut Creek took care of us and diverted the water onto Walnut, and now a developer's going to come in and put more water into that creek and flood my house, which is a health concern to me and my family. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Anybody else here in the gallery?
So, on Zoom, we do have one person raising their hand at the moment, and I'll bring them in, and just note for other attendees on Zoom, if they wish to speak, if they could please press the raise hand button. Let me bring in Carol Evans here, it'll just take a second. Zoom's a little slow doing this. Okay, it looks like Carol Evans is here. There we go.
Hello, please let me know when I can start.
You're good to go, Ms. Evans.
Okay, thank you. I live on 99 Jerome Court, the street just to the north of the proposed development. I'm asking you to deny this proposal for the following reasons. Design, the Design Review Commission voted unanimously against the design, and I agree with the commission's reasons for the vote. Floods, the hydrology report is strikingly narrow in scope, flooding has been and remains an existential problem in this neighborhood. The proposal refers to the narrow and shallow drainage ditch that runs through the neighborhood, including my street Jerome Court, as Homestead Creek. The developer proposed only one drainage option in the hydrology report directing all water flow into Homestead Creek. The developer should have been required to include all possible drainage options. The hydrology report is based on a 10-year flood risk. However, atmospheric rivers are forecast to be even more frequent because of the warming temperatures caused by climate change. Therefore, the report should have included assessing the 100-year and the 500-year flood risks. Homestead Creek is a flood risk whenever there is heavy rain, and even more so during an atmospheric river. Because of this, Jerome Court is included on the Walnut Creek Department of Public Works DPW flood watch list. This means that DPW sends staff in person to monitor the creek, starting in the fall and periodically during the rainy season. I also call for their help when the creek flow backs up, which does happen. The community must rely on you to protect environmental and community health and safety in this 21st-century world of climate change and its impacts when you review a development proposal. The hydrology report does not provide the comprehensive information you need to greenlight this proposed development. Traffic, the proposal would accommodate 26 garage vehicles plus additional onsite parking for six vehicles. These vehicles, as well as delivery and vendor trucks servicing the proposed development, will exacerbate the already congested traffic on Walnut Boulevard. Vehicles are frequently backed up on Walnut Boulevard to and from Ignatius Valley Road. In the morning and afternoon, there is significant school and commute traffic, making it difficult, if not impossible, to safely walk across or turn left or right onto Walnut Boulevard from the streets along Walnut Boulevard, including Jerome Court. Parking, 13 houses with two-vehicle garages and six additional parking spaces would be packed into only 1.5 acres. House driveways would be too short to accommodate parking. Parking would not be allowed on the narrow onsite street. Nearby streets do not allow parking because they are private or parking is scarce. Jerome Court is a private street owned and maintained by the homeowners. Walnut East is a private parking-only condominium complex on the south side of the proposed development. The few public parking spaces in front of Walnut East are always full, despite that photo that was shown. Kara Court is a private, no-parking street to the north of Jerome Court. Finally, Sierra Avenue, the cross-street opposite Walnut East, frequently has no available public street parking. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, great timing.
I did my best on that one.
You did great.
We have one more person raising their hand on Zoom, and I'm going to bring them back, bring them in here. This is Mike, just says Mike. We can ask Speaker Mike if they would like to unmute their microphone, and if they wish to turn on the camera as well. I'm, so we've let Mike in, but they've not turned off their, or they've not unmuted their microphone, or, oh.
I finally got it to work.
You're on.
So, are we ready?
You're good to go, Mike.
Okay, so first, I would like to thank my neighbors, they did a fantastic job and presentation. I submitted my notes to you, and I hope you go over them and take them, you know, into consideration with my concerns, which I share with my neighbors. But I have a few things outside of what I wrote, and one is water usage. We all know we're in a drought, and this development with additional 23 homes is going to consume approximately 100,000 gallons a month. So, how can you say that's not a health and safety issue, when we're all having to cut back? We have to pay fines for additional water usage, yet you can approve this kind of expenditure of water that we really don't have. The on-street parking proposed is, is no guarantee. The people from the condominiums could park there, that can't really be counted on as parking for this development. Private street, you know, as you all discussed, and you, you made a good point of saying, it's not policed. We've had issues on our street, Jerome Court, the police won't come out for anything. It's like, they don't even patrol it. So, you know, what are we going to have there? We're going to be dependent on the homeowner to stand for it? I don't think that's really going to happen, it's going to just create a lot of problems. And then it was, what was brought up was climate change. You know, you've got a number of trees, as was discussed, but look at the wildlife, there is so much wildlife there. We've lived in our home for over 30 years, and we're really going to miss it, it's just a shame that we're displacing more wildlife. And then green power, it's like, isn't that a state policy? Isn't that a health and welfare, to produce more power, green power? I mean, these are things that, you know, it's just, we put to the wayside for $102,000 to cut down trees. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think that there's a better solution, they've been presented, build five homes, four homes, something that fits in the neighborhood, and I think that's a better approach, to put something in instead of shoehorning something in that it really doesn't fit, and believe me, it's going to cause problems. So, as members of this board, I know you're all appointed or elected, and I think you should represent the committee, or the community as a whole. And if you look, we've had over 1,000 people opposing this project on next door, and that's a big, big part of the community, I think, that is very concerned about this. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your input, and I really hope that you evaluate this, because it's going to impact our lives, you know, indefinitely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I don't see anybody else raising their hands on Zoom, however, it looks like we do have another public speaker in person.
Very good.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sylvia Argabright, and I live at 2698 Walnut Boulevard, in the Walnut East Townhomes. And I just want to share one of my first memories of when we first moved in over 24 years ago, was my son's bedroom looks over this property, and his first comment was, "Oh, mommy, it's so quiet here, it's peaceful." And I was thinking, yeah, it really is, it's been a peaceful, wonderful place to live. I've never been a city girl. So, my home will look over, straight into other people's windows, and also, besides privacy, noise, I have a lot of concerns, but I've written that and turned that in. But I'm not the only one. We have over 900 residents who have signed a petition stating that they do not support this development whatsoever. And I just would hope that this commission will acknowledge these 900 residents and think about the living conditions they will be put in, the health conditions, not only physical, but mental as well. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. So I think we're clear on the line still?
Nobody else is raising their hands.
Very good. So, at this point, we will, no additional speakers, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to either respond, closing comments, respond to any comments they've heard, or wave both. Okay, I'm getting the wave both. So we'll close the public hearing at this time, and bring it back to the commission for additional questions, deliberate, and deliberation.
I have one question for the applicant.
Yes, please.
It's an engineering question. Just, I'm just curious as to why you didn't take any, it appears to me you didn't take any of the drainage from the site to Walnut Boulevard.
So, the reason for, currently the site kind of drains towards the creek, because that's the low-lying area, so typically, just best engineering practice is to maintain the existing drainage path. If we were to push the water towards Walnut Boulevard, we'd actually have to raise the back end of the site, adjacent to the creek, bringing an additional fill, additional retaining walls, and then the additional watershed area moving towards the Walnut Boulevard stormdrain system could have potential impacts to that system. So, we're maintaining the existing drainage path.
Okay, in the absence of surface drainage, I was just looking at the elevations, the flow lines of the Walnut Boulevard, looked to me like a storm drain, could have intercepted a portion of the water, because a storm drain doesn't need to have the same slope as the surface, and could have carried, you know, a percentage of it, or maybe 50% of the water out to Walnut Boulevard, thus contributing to easing the minds of the neighbors regarding flooding. So what, did that, was that looked at at all?
Yes, it was looked at. So there is a portion with the Walnut Boulevard widening, there is a proposal of adding a storm drain inlet to Walnut Boulevard and capturing some of that flow that can't be directed back the other way, and there is a conform portion that does drain to Walnut Boulevard. But generally speaking, the pre-project flow, kind of as brought up before, was the existing flow that's coming off the site today, per the city standards, would be maintained in the developed condition.
Okay, so, it's feasible, but you chose not to do that, is that correct?
We've taken a look at the feasibility of the grading and drainage design as it relates to how the site is laid out.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Any other Commissioner questions of the applicant before we get into deliberation? Commissioner Needy?
Sorry, I, I'm looking at figure nine of the hydrology report. Why does it still show the water surface elevation? Is that black block the house? And that's a 10-year, so that's not even the 100-year, correct?
So, looking at figure nine, yes, the black block is meant to represent the modeling of the buildings themselves, because in the proposed condition, they included the, the streets, the buildings, and so on and so forth. And yeah, per the city and county standards, the 10-year storm was the analysis for the system and for the site. So, kind of like was mentioned before, at that most downstream end, based on that water, that starting water surface elevation, which was more conservative than the typical normal depth, critical depth, and bank full scenarios, which were all able to fit inside the ditch. So, I guess the outside consultant for the applicant team had discussed with the city and their outside consultant, and had come to terms on choosing the most conservative starting water surface.
I guess the issue is that, well, one, I don't like seeing water next to a house, which is what the cross-section shows. Second is that typically, when you're doing a hydraulic model for a street, for example, the 100-year hydraulic grade line is contained within the top of curb, right? And then if the pipe is designed, for example, for a 10-year, and so that's why I really would have liked to seen in this hydrology report, that those homes are not impacted for anything beyond the 10-year, and what I'm seeing is that at cross-section 1002, it is in fact impacted by that so far 10-year flood.
I believe the intent is just to, kind of like I mentioned before, is that the project site's currently not in the floodplain, and the intention is to make sure that the buildings and proposed buildings will not be impacted by flooding or in the floodplain as well. So, based upon the hydrology report, that's effectively what we're trying to accomplish.
Floodplain is different than the HGL, so what I'm looking at right here is that the HGL does in fact touch, I guess, nobody, nobody wants, and I know you're elevating it 12 inches above the base flood elevation, but nobody wants to have their yard with, you know, have standing water in it, that's all. And then, that's a question for Haley. Do you know why, when the site layout was completed, why a proper delineation, a wetland delineation, wasn't completed just to determine the riparian limits of the water? Just out of curiosity.
I'm actually going to see if I can pull on one of my colleagues to help me answer that one. See if I can get someone from engineering up here, and you might, maybe re-ask it, too, I'm not sure if she caught that.
I was, I'm just curious, if you don't know.
I caught the question, I don't recall, I recall our conversations, we did have conversations with the Water Board and Department of Fish and Game during an earlier iteration, when they were doing, actually going to put a pipe in the creek, and there were grave concerns, but I don't think in our conversations, I'm looking at Haley, because she was on the phone call, that they ever brought up wetlands, they were just concerned about work in the creek. And so, we revisited the revised plans with them, but there was never any conversation with fishing wildlife or with the Water Board about wetlands, but I can't speak to the biological report in terms of wetlands delineation.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious. Thank you so much.
Any other questions of the applicant or staff or deliberation? Anybody want to start? Commissioner Lezak?
I'll just bring up a couple of points for consideration by the commissioners, based on, you know, what we've heard. You know, there's certain findings that we need to make or not make in order to move forward with the application, based on the materials that we have. Some of these items could be interpreted in different ways, based on kind of the discussion tonight. So, for example, the hydrology report, which only has a 10-year floodplain, has under a very conservative analysis some water touching one of the homes in this model that Commissioner Needy was just talking about. You know, could, could the commission find that to be a safety concern? And if they did, is that an issue relative to, is that a specific public health and safety concern for the residents? Another item that I would kind of want to mention is that, you know, after rereading the biological report, and coming back to... the biological report and coming back to the resolution, I would note that one of the findings that we are trying to make tonight has to do with the California Environmental Quality Act, and we're being asked to make an infill exemption, basically to say that there is no reason whatsoever that any other environmental study, like a mitigated negative declaration, negative declaration, would need to be studied and made finding. And to do that, we need to determine that based on this biological resources report, there's no value for habitat of endangered species or animal species. And, you know, perhaps when you use the word endangered, that may come into play here. And this is, you know, a long, complicated report, but I do note, to kind of support Commissioner Needing's comments, it does a recommendation about Army Corps, Regional Water Quality Control Board, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and whether those studies are necessary. Staff did a very good job, and they've added conditions of approval, I think they're conditions 51 and 52, that speak specifically to this requirement. And basically, what they're requiring without doing a, some kind of a mitigation monitoring report, is they're requiring that these permits, that these analyses be done before these agencies and the permits be pursued if necessary. And so, I would understand that in its own complicated way to mean that the project will need to pursue an Army Corps delineation in order to determine that they don't have to have the rest of these permits. So from my perspective, that is actually covered in the conditions of approval. There's another section here into the recommendations at the end of this biological report that speaks to pre-construction avian surveys, talks about migratory bird act, it talks about bat surveys. I think our experience is that generally, these are standard pre-construction surveys, and are not intended to indicate that there's a lot of, you know, endangered species on the property. But I did note that there is no condition of approval that would require these studies, even though it's recommended clearly by the biologist. So, if we do make the finding that an infill exemption is appropriate, and I'm not sure that it is, but if we do, then I would suggest that we add a condition of approval to require these pre-construction surveys, because they would be required in a regular SECA document by a mitigation monitoring report. And then lastly, they go on, goes on and speaks to, you know, your standard grading erosion control issues because of the creek. I don't know that a separate condition needs to be there, that's a standard, it's going to be a standard city requirement. I guess I'm bringing this up to say that I'm questioning whether an infill exemption is actually appropriate here. I mean, we do this all the time in infill locations that are paved parking lots, this is a bit of a discretionary item I'd like to just bring to your attention. And then, the last issue on my mind has to do with the tree survey and the removal of these trees. There's a certain amount of findings and discretion here in a tree removal permit that's outside of the SB 330 category. And while I understand that these trees need to be removed in order to create this development in this particular way, and maybe I'm open to that, but one of the things that the commission can determine is, we can decide that they need to spend that money instead of putting $100,000 into trees in the cities, in Lufi, to be spent other places that they could, we could require that money to be spent onsite, in mitigation onsite. And I know it's difficult to develop the site right now with the location of the current trees, but, you know, as a way to try to compensate the neighbors and maybe protect some of their views from their backyards, if we require them to find a location for these trees in the backyards of these lots and some of these other locations, that's completely within the discretion of the planning commission outside of SB 330. Seems to me it's not necessarily a hardship to the project, and it could benefit the community. So these are a few of, you know, my kind of technical review comments for your consideration.
Commissioner Pickett.
Well, a question of staff, I guess, I think Commissioner Needing raised a good issue about the flooding, or the representation of potential flooding in the backyard of a house. How do we, exhibits the example the applicant gave us showed that the water level went up to above the pad level of an adjoining house. I don't see that we're going to be able to resolve that this evening, but I think it's a valid question that needs to be resolved before we go on. So what would be our appropriate process to do that?
I'd ask for our engineers' help here, but the commission could impose additional conditions designed to mitigate that specific issue.
Okay, we ask the applicant to come back? I don't mind hearing this thing again, I think it's a big enough issue that we might take all five meetings, we got five, right?
I would, I would, yeah, I would defer to planning staff on where we are and the number of meetings with respect to SB 330.
Two.
I can, actually, if I could address that. So, the zoning ordinance requires a preliminary and a final hearing with the designer view commission, plus this one hearing at the planning commission, and we have to then also save two hearings for appeals, one for an appeal of the decision of this commission, and one for an appeal of the designer view commission. So that totals five.
Okay, so that's one question. So the $100,000 fee, it's 102 or seven or something on the tree, what happens to that money? Who manages it, and where does the money go? Where's it get spent?
So if payment is into the tree in lieu fund, that money goes towards planting trees in city, open space, city parks, and I would imagine it's at the discretion of our Public Works Department.
Actually, I can speak to this, this is in the municipal code, and it says here, "Any in lieu fees collected by the city pursuant to this section shall be used only for the installation or replacement of trees in city parks or open space or other areas of benefit to the city."
Okay, so none goes in the back end of the neighborhood?
Unless the, unless the finding could be made that that would be of a benefit to the city.
Okay.
Commissioner Pickett, I guess I would address that by saying that the municipal governs the discretion of that, of those funds, but nothing prohibits the commission from kind of separately providing direction to staff that, you know, you encourage those be used onsite to the extent feasible. You can make that recommendation, but ultimately, it would still be a staff decision under the municipal code.
Yeah. Since nobody looked into that, it'd be hard to come up with a suggestion for that this evening. So I support the concept of adding some additional language on the parking enforcement and management of that, and as suggested by Commissioner Ward, we'll come up with some language for I think those are my comments. I am concerned about the drainage, I think that needs to be dealt with, I don't know how we best deal with that. That'd be the impact on the onsite, on the development itself. And I would just have to make a political comment here that we are bound by state regulations, and we have a state election coming up, so think about that when you vote. That's all.
Well done. Commissioner Strongman.
I concur with my colleague, I feel hidebound or hog-tied by the state legislature on this, and that we really don't have any discretion at all with regret. I do go along with Commissioner Vice Chair Ward on the recommendations for including on the HOA, but I do want to make sure we have that the city can go in and enforce those if necessary, but it's not obligated to.
I think we've all received a copy of what our city attorney, Brian Hickey, put together here, so that can be addressed, the wording is in front of you, and we'll read that into the record at the appropriate time. Any other commissioner comments, or Vice Chair Ward?
So I share many of the comments that have been made here, you know, we do have limited discretion in terms of what we can do here, and I share the concerns with regard to drainage, flooding, and the proper maintenance and governance of this area, the last of which I think has been addressed by the new language we've been given by the city attorney. But I do want to say also that infill projects in general are good for our community, and we desperately need more housing, both in the state of California and in our community of Walnut Creek, especially low-income housing, and this project does provide both. The area already has multifamily housing in it, it's close to the downtown and transit. It's a good place to put, to put people to live and enjoy our city. And it's always frustrating, because we say, "We need more housing, we need more housing, we need more low-income housing," and then when we're presented with plans, everybody says, "Oh, but we want it somewhere else." So that's, you know, we only have so much there to put the housing in. So I think that we need to be mindful that we're nowhere meeting our goals with regard, and state requirements with regard to how much housing we're supposed to be building. We're not meeting the needs of people who want to both live and work in our community, and participate in our community at all income levels. And so, I think that we need to be a little more flexible in terms of how we, how we look at our neighborhoods and how our community is evolving, and consider that, you know, we want our teachers and firefighters and people who work in our downtown businesses to be able to live in this community as well, and that's really important. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you much. And the benefit of going last is that I concur with a lot of what my colleagues up here on the commission have said. I respect and want to tip my hat to the professionalism and experience and wisdom of the various backgrounds on this commission that brought up some very appropriate questions that I in a million years could never have, have come up with. It seems to me we are, the point about this state mandated density bonus allowance, it's a new reality, our hands are somewhat tied. However, some issues were brought up here tonight that I think I'm going to defer here in a minute to staff as to how we go about what the next step is. We do, as mentioned, we have the city attorney put together some language that covers the HOA and guest parking, and as a condition of, written into the conditions of approval. But there is the issue that I will ask for some input on, the hydrology issue, is that in fact, is that in fact a safety concern? It seems to me it is, but infill exemption and the tree removal discretion, we already talked about that relocating the trees, the fees on the relocation fees, is that something that could be directed directly to this? And I believe that's been addressed, so.
Yeah, which item, hydrology. And I guess, is our, I don't know if our engineer's still out there, but I guess I'd want to clarify, from the commission's standpoint, if you do want to impose additional conditions with respect to hydrology, that may merit further discussion. I wasn't 100% clear on what those would be, so we can have that discussion.
Commissioner Lezak.
So, you know, I know I brought it up, and I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that there's a certain subjectivity to that specific safety issue. But I will point you to the conditions of the resolution, because I think that there's several conditions here that do speak to stormwater. Condition 28 talks about, you know, the peak flows should be metered onsite to match pre-development flows. Now, exactly what does that mean, and which model are we talking about, and how is that done? But it's saying that the method for metering stormwater shall be approved by the city engineer. So, I guess what I'm telling you is there's already, to some degree, a requirement of the project to go back and satisfy the city engineer, and it may be that based on these comments, the city engineer will look at this a little bit closer. This does not say 100-year flood, but I guess what I'm trying to say is there are already several conditions that address this, and I'm not sure that I'm smart enough to draft a new one to go with this. Of course, that's why we have Brian here, but, so I guess I was not trying to suggest we add a condition, I was just trying to point out that it is a concern, and it's, it does open, I think, the door to some of this question about, you know, specific safety.
Sure.
I'll just real quick hit my thoughts on these others, and that is that I do think that the project probably is, you know, could be, could be interpreted one way or the other in terms of the SECA question I brought up. And I was trying to find, you know, a way of resolving that by adding that one condition relative to the pre-construction surveys. That was my way of suggesting that the project could move forward tonight if we chose to do so. And then, my thought on, that I brought up about the trees, was that rather than approve the tree removal with allowing the money to go to the city's fund, we approve it with the alternative of requiring the mitigation to be spent onsite. If the money is approved as in lieu, and it goes to the city's fund, there's absolutely, I mean, you read the code, there's, then it's in the city's fund. So I was just reading in the staff report that there's a section in there that gives us that alternative. So that was, again, that was my nuanced way of trying to say, I think it's a reasonably good project. I think that there's some issues that do need to be thoughtfully resolved during this process, and we brought them up to staff, and I think we can condition them and let staff do their job.
Okay. Commissioner Pickett.
Question for staff, can we change that, I think it was condition 28, change it from a 10-year storm to a 100-year storm?
I think the issue there is that the 10-year, and again, I'm going to defer to our engineer, but the 10-year storm is the city's standard, and it's the standard by which other projects are evaluated, so I guess I would caution against potentially imposing a standard that is above and beyond what the city typically imposes.
Just adding a zero. It's pretty easy.
Yeah, I would echo what Brian's saying, I mean, our drainage standards, which are consistent with the county, are pretty clear on which design storm to use based on the watershed area, and the watershed area here is within the 10-year storm, it's not for a 25-year or 100-year, so we would be requiring something beyond the standard requirement for a project this size.
Okay.
And I also want to point out one more question, comment, when I believe a resident brought up, or I believe it was Commissioner Netten brought up, figure nine, and thinking that it was, that indicated that the structure was being flooded. I mean, I'm not saying that's a cartoon, but the table one has the water surface elevations, and it's 120.5, and that is below all the finished floors, that is below all the finished floors of the houses.
And the yards?
I think there may be one yard that, let me go back to the right page.
Because that would be great news.
Yeah. Let's see, lot six, its rear yard is 119.9, but all the other yards look like, there's one that's at 120.3. So there might be some within the yard, but all the finished floors of the houses are above.
I must disagree with my colleague regarding the tree in lieu fund. I do not like cutting down 200-year-old trees, but then I don't see how we could spend $100,000 on that property to replace anything like it, there's not enough space. Unfortunately, it just doesn't compute for me.
I just parrot that. I would agree that there isn't enough room to spend it onsite. The applicant's going to have to spend money onsite anyhow to landscape, but it would just end up really saving him money, so we'll put it in the fund, and it'll benefit the city, unfortunately, it won't benefit the neighborhood.
Consider it scratched. Does anybody want to, any other questions before we put it right back? Anybody want to?
I'll take on one last one that's related to the parking question. In the CCNRs that I prepare, we have a condition that has to do with parking in garages, and it doesn't require, I mean, it's very hard to require people to park their cars in the garage, which of course is the intent of the city's code parking requirement.
in the garage, which of course is the intent of the city's code parking requirement here. But the requirement in the CCNRs that I use basically says that people can't build anything permanent within their garage with the intent that they, their garage can only have temporary things in it, so they should be able to move stuff around to park their car. Then again, this is to one of the comments tonight, that we all know that there are certain folks who have garages full of stuff and can't park their cars, but presumably you could move your stuff. It's when you build your man cave and you have your TV or your women cave, depending on how you prefer that, that this becomes a problem. And the reason I bring up this question is because, a couple of things we talked about is, I'd love to add that as a condition of approval, but I'm not sure, we do it at our discretion, I'm not sure that that might be in conflict with state ADU law. And so I'm not sure that we want to go there. It's just something I'm bringing up. And then even though the city may have some review rights over the CCNRs, I'm not sure that the city really wants to actually, in any way, shape, or form, be responsible for code compliance of HOA rules. And I think we've touched on this in previous meetings. I'm not even sure we're allowed to. And I think every, most of us know here that the Department of Real Estate is going to review the CCNRs as well. So I think we should put some guidelines of things we'd like to see that the city should review, but I'm not sure that we want to make it a very strong, you know, requirement other than that we review to see them. And I certainly don't think we should be, the city should be doing any code compliance. Thank you.
Our resident expert.
Without giving any legal opinions, I think, I mean, I agree with you. I don't think we should be saying, telling people what they can put in their garages. And I don't think that we can really enforce that for a number of reasons, nor really should we. And I think the way that you deal with that is that you say, the parking, the parking, on-street parking that's provided within that development is guest parking only. So that the scenario you want to allow is if I don't have any car, or if I have one car, and I want to fill my garage with something else and park my one or zero vehicles in that garage, I'm allowed to do that. But I'm not allowed to have, fill my garage with stuff and then park my car somewhere else, essentially onsite. So that's, I think that we've addressed that by having as a condition of approval that the six spaces that are outside of the garages are for vendors, guests, and other people. They're not for people to fill their garages with stuff or ADUs or anything else, and then use them as permanent parking. So I think that's how we regulate that, and I think it's pretty effective that way. So that's my comment on parking.
Very good.
One of my passions.
So I'll bring it back to who wants to pose a motion with said edits.
I'm going to start, and we'll see if you can catch something I missed. So I'm going to propose that we approve the resolution for the vesting tentative map 9556, state density bonus, tree removal, and drip line permit encroachment permit, application number Y21-024, with the following modifications. A, that we add the additional CCNR language that was suggested by city attorney Ryan Hickey, as we just discussed. And then in addition, and in addition, I'd like to add a condition of approval relative to pre-construction avian survey and pre-construction bat survey, as described in pages 26 and 27 of the Oberding Biological Report. And that would be my motion. Did I miss anything?
Quick question. Could you explain your, the bat survey, how would that work?
It's a, it's pretty clear in this page where basically the biologist, depending on what time of year they're going to do construction, a biologist goes out to the site for a certain period of time to make sure that there's, in this case, either no raptors or no bats that are roosting or living in the trees at the time that this, that the work happens. I think that the bats is probably relative to the structures. They're fairly standard pre-construction surveys, and, you know, I think by requiring that, that allows us to not need to consider this to be a problem relative to CEQA.
Before we get a second, is, do we want to read?
So, yes, I would like to read the additional condition regarding the HOA and CCNRs into the record, and I'll do that now. So this would be an additional condition, and it would read, "Prior to recordation of a final map, applicant/owner shall provide city planning staff with evidence of the establishment of a homeowners association governing the internal conduct of the 13-unit development. Further, applicant/owner shall provide city planning staff with a copy of the HOA's covenants, conditions, and restrictions, so that staff may verify that the CCNRs contain provisions that reasonably govern the following matters. One, restricting homeowners from utilizing the six parking spaces designated as guest parking, so that they may be preserved for non-residents." I guess I would amend that to say they may be preserved, like Commissioner Ward's language for visitors. You had some other words in there.
I had vendors in there, vendors, vendors and guests, I think.
So it's a visitors, vendors, and other non-residents. That should cover it. Two, maintenance of the private roads within the development. And three, maintenance of onsite storm drainage facilities. The CCNR shall provide the city of Walnut Creek with the right, but not the obligation to enforce the provisions set forth therein.
Okay. And then can you speak to or read in or formulate on the fly the pre-construction avian and bat survey referenced by Commissioner?
Right. So then this would be an additional condition stating that applicant/owner shall conduct pre-construction, a pre-construction avian survey and a pre-construction bat survey as identified in the, in the report by Oberding Environmental, Inc., dated September 21, 2021.
So moved.
Yes, thank you for that detail. So moved.
Thank you. Will we get a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we call for the vote? Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
Chair Reiser?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Well, we're looking at an hour and 45 minutes. Do we want to stretch our legs or just roll?
Roll.
All right. There we go. We're going to have a three-minute bio break. Thank you.
We're not rolling.
We're rolling due applause.
All right, we'll bring it back to order and go straight into the next public hearing, which is Project Citrus Marketplace.
Sorry, it wasn't on. We'll bring it back to order and go right into the next item, which is Public Hearing, Project Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center Rezone, Shopping Center Rezone Application Number Y 21-117. We'll turn it over to Simmer Gill, Associate Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the City, and we are here tonight to consider the rezone application for Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center that's located at 2200 Oak Grove Road, and the application number is Y 21-117. The applicant Fred Witt, that's representing the project, is here tonight in person. And then we also have Jordan Sowers available. She's with the GoPuff team, and she is available via Zoom. First, let's start with the site location. The 10-acre shopping center is located along the eastern side of Oak Grove Road and at the intersection of Citrus Avenue, and is comprised of three parcels with six single-story buildings containing over 100,000 square feet of floor area, and there are a total of 483 parking stalls on site. The shopping center consists of a mix of commercial uses, which also includes the daycare center and a vacant tenant, which will be occupied by Nob Hill, which was occupied by Nob Hill Foods, and access to the shopping center is gained from multiple driveways, pointing the arrow to it, along Oak Grove Road and Citrus Avenue. The surrounding area consists of residential uses that abut the side and rear property lines, and across Citrus Avenue are office uses, and across Oak Grove Road is the Orchard Shopping Center. The existing planned development zoning regulations, PD 1936, that were adopted in the late 1990s, are very specific and were written to address the concerns of the Woodlands' resident neighbors, residents at the time. And now, some 23 years later, the shopping center is at a competitive disadvantage to other neighborhood shopping centers, specifically Orchards and the Encina Grande Shopping Center, as their use regulations are more current in the market, and both are located at more prominently visible intersections when compared to the Citrus Shopping Center, and due to which Citrus Marketplace isn't able to attract the same number and types of tenants to their center as these shopping centers are. And due to the restrictive zoning, Citrus Marketplace is continuing to see a decline in retail tenants, and as seen on this exhibit, there are currently six vacancies, and two of those are the existing banks, Chase Bank and Bank of America, will also be vacating by the end of the year. And I believe Chase Bank is moving to the Encina Grande Shopping Center. So due to this, the applicant has requested a rezone to update the existing outdated regulations by bringing them more in line with the neighborhood shopping centers. That would, of course, help in attracting more business opportunities for this center. And tonight, as required by the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission will provide the City Council a written recommendation on the rezoning application, and the City Council will be the approving body of this proposal, as well as adoption of the negative declaration document. And now to go over the proposed request. The rezoning will replace the existing planned development zoning regulations to allow a change in the existing operating hours of the primary anchor tenant and a change for the secondary anchor tenant, which is currently occupied by Bevmo. So it would allow Bevmo 24-hour outgoing deliveries for app-based sales, with alcohol deliveries allowed only between 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily. I will go into more detail on these requests a little later in my presentation. The rezone will also update the use regulations for the center to be similar to the community commercial zone, but with some differences to respect the proximity of the Woodlands' neighborhood. Again, I'll go in more detail in the next few slides. And the parking will also, the parking in this shopping center would apply the CC District Parking Standards with this new rezone, and for the record, staff did discover an error on Page 5 of the staff report under Parking, under the Parking section. The required parking is actually 453 stalls when we calculated it per the CC zone, which results in a surplus of 30 stalls and not a total of 80, as stated in the report. And the following are the changes in the new PD ordinance. Several uses that are either permitted or conditionally permitted in the CC zone will continue to be prohibited in this shopping center. Some of these uses that are prohibited would be the multifamily residential, hotels, bed and breakfast inns, restaurants with drive-through service, and emergency shelters will not be allowed. Again, to respect the proximity of the Woodlands' neighborhood, the applicant did strike those out, out of the proposed PD. The rezone will also carry over several operational regulations that are in the existing PD, such as the incoming delivery hours, restrictions on delivery vehicles larger than 20 feet in length, and maintain the existing hours of operation for all of the existing tenants or uses in the shopping center, with the exception of Nob Hill Foods, which is for the anchor tenant, they're requesting a extension of operating hours. The applicant is also requesting office and medical uses to be allowed by right, and that no use permit be required. And some changes are also proposed from the existing PD regulations, one of which is to allow the outdoor recreation uses, which is currently prohibited in the PD. The request to allow indoor recreation activities with a conditional use permit would be similar to what's allowed in the nearby shopping centers and what is also allowed with a use permit in the CC zone. The applicant is also requesting to remove the restriction on the number of restaurants allowed, which is currently limited to a maximum of five in the existing PD. And the applicant is also requesting to remove, remove the restriction on the number and types of offices allowed in the shopping center. And now let's go over the anchor tenant space changes. The hours of operation for all tenants in the shopping center will remain the same, with the current hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. However, in order to provide a little more flexibility in pursuing a replacement anchor tenant, the in-store operating hours for the primary anchor space will be expanded from, to the hours of 5:00 a.m. to midnight. It should be noted that the zoning ordinance typically does not place restrictions on business operating hours, and no other grocery store in Walnut Creek is subject to the restrictions on their hours of operation. And currently, all four of the Safeway stores in Walnut Creek, including the Safeway across the street at the Orchards, opens at 5:00 and closes at 2:00 a.m. daily. The closing time of this anchor tenant will only be extended by one hour, so currently it closes at 11:00, and now they're asking for it to close at midnight. All deliveries to the anchor tenant space are made via the front-facing loading area, and the store faces away from the adjacent neighborhood, thereby reducing any impacts. Additionally, no exterior change is proposed to the existing space that would expand the operational footprint of this building. And staff believes the proposed extension is a minor change with minimal impacts, but one that will provide flexibility that's needed to attract a replacement anchor tenant for this specific space. And the hours of operation for the secondary anchor tenant space, which currently is occupied by Bevmo, will be changed to accommodate the outgoing deliveries via online platform called GoPuff, which is a consumer goods delivery company, and I believe the applicant will provide more details on the business operating, how it operates. The outgoing deliveries of alcohol would occur until 2:00 a.m. and resume at 6:00 a.m., and outgoing deliveries of non-alcoholic goods would occur 24 hours a day. And as shown on the project plans, which is included as Attachment 6 of your Agenda Packet, all the outgoing deliveries after 7:00 p.m. will be conducted from the front-facing entrance of the store. And more details again about the GoPuff model is included in Attachment 7 of your Agenda Packet as well. Also, the Walnut Creek Police Department has reviewed this proposal and expressed no concerns, given that they have not received any complaints on a similar delivery service operations model that's conducted at the other Bevmo location at 2940 North Main Street. That Bevmo is also located within the CC zoning district and is not subject to any restrictions on its hours of operation. Additionally, a noise study was conducted for the site, which concluded that the proposed outgoing deliveries would not increase noise levels on site, and that the parking lot would not, the noise in the parking lot would not exceed 40 dB A at the nearest residential properties. Staff does support the proposal to allow outgoing deliveries of online orders beyond the current operating hours, as it will continue the city's goals of providing opportunities to promote business retention and support conveniently located retail uses. Now moving on to the applicant's request on office uses. The existing use regulations allows office uses, however, limits them to two banks, one real estate office and one insurance agency. Under the applicant's proposal, the business and medical offices would be allowed by right anywhere in the shopping center, without limits to a number of office tenants. And staff recommends that a conditional use permit be required for business and medical office uses, as the general plan designation of general retail states that ground-floor retail is encouraged, and office uses may be allowed on the second floor or above. This language to require a use permit has also been included as a condition in the draft resolution. The requirement for a conditional use permit would also keep the shopping center consistent with the use regulations in the other shopping centers located within the same zone, and the use permit requirement would also control how many offices could be allowed in the shopping center, and could also be used to limit their location to tenant spaces that are less commercially viable for retail. For restaurants, the existing use regulations limit the number of restaurants allowed in the shopping center to a maximum of five, while the community commercial zone has no such limit. And the existing PD also does not provide any explanation as to why this limitation was originally put in place. The other shopping centers in Walnut Creek are not subject to such limits. While there are currently only two restaurants in the shopping center, this change would help support the center's continued economic viability, and staff does support this change. Also, given the proximity to the Woodlands' neighborhood, restaurants and drive-through services, such as fast-food restaurants with a drive-through window, are prohibited, and this is a change from the existing regulations, which does not really differentiate between restaurants with or without a drive-through window. The general plan designation for the site is general retail, which is intended to one-stop-shop businesses that rely on customers arriving by auto, and includes a number of uses such as merchandise stores, financial institutions, restaurants, and shopping centers. The proposed rezoning and all uses outlined in Attachment 8 are consistent with the general plan, with the exception of the proposed ground-floor uses to be allowed by right, as requested by the applicant. Overall, the proposed rezoning would further the goals and policies of the general plan, as it would encourage new business opportunities and enhance the viability of the existing shopping center, thereby helping to sustain the community's quality of life and a dynamic economy. Apologize, I didn't click on time. So that was regarding the general plan designation that we just went over. And just to summarize, the proposed rezoning would enhance the commercial viability of the shopping center, as it would allow uses that are already allowed in other nearby shopping centers, and giving the Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center equal opportunity when attracting these types of businesses. And the rezone request is also compatible with the general plan, and a negative declaration was prepared for the project, which concluded that there would be no environmental impacts due to the rezone and the uses requested. The rezone is a reasonable request, and one that will not be a, will not have a detrimental impact on the community, as the shopping center will continue to respect and abide by many of the regulations currently in place. And with respect to the neighborhood, several of the uses, as I mentioned previously, have been eliminated, as they are allowed in the CC zone, but will be prohibited in Citrus. And finally, staff does support the proposed rezone, with the exception of allowing office uses by right, as office uses are permitted on the ground floor with approval of a use permit. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the negative declaration and approve the proposed rezoning application Y 21-117. And that is all I have for my presentation, but I do believe that Jordan Sowers, representing the GoPuff team, has a presentation to go over, and the applicant Fred Witt and myself are both available for any questions on the project.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Simmer. Great presentation.
I'm so sorry.
Commissioner questions? Commissioner Pickett?
I thought I heard you say something, maybe I didn't, but office uses would be permitted by right, no conditional use permit would be required. Is that what you're?
That is the applicant's request.
Okay, and that's what your draft revised PD?
Attachment 8, yes. The draft PD, we basically are supporting the proposed rezone with the, with the condition that office uses and medical office uses require a use permit and not be allowed by right.
Okay, and just to confirm, I think you said, and I think it also, I think I also read it here, but the size of the delivery vehicles to Bevmo are limited to a certain size?
Not necessarily. There's a condition in the existing PD that talks about delivery vehicles that are larger than 20 feet in length. They have to service the stores in the front of the building, so they're not allowed to go in the back, behind the buildings, where there is the access road off Oak Grove Road. And for Bevmo, I think it wasn't clear in the applicant's business plan, but they're not actually delivery vehicles or like UPS trucks, they're just going to be regular vehicles, just like you and I drive, or other vehicles we see in the shopping center, and they'll be driven by contract employee, contractors that are employed with GoPuff or Bevmo, so they would pick up the orders from, from the Bevmo location and then drop them off within, I believe, five-mile radius to the resident or business that ordered it.
Yeah, so we're not seeing semis?
No, not at all. Yeah, it wasn't clear, and I asked the same question.
And then in the, the real early morning hours, I think it said that the delivery pickups or whatever would be in the front?
No, 7:00 p.m. to, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., though we picked up in the morning, and then during the day, when all the other businesses are operating, their vehicles will go to the back door for Bevmo and pick up from there, which actually is better, because they, if there's multiple vehicles coming to do the same thing to pick up and go, there, nobody is accessing the back road. They're just going, the delivery vehicles will go there.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may offer a little bit of clarification to answer your question, Commissioner Pickett, there, there is no restriction on the size of the vehicles allowed for use with the outgoing deliveries. There are restrictions regarding where vehicles larger than 20 feet in length can go. This is actually in the draft ordinance, which is Exhibit A of Attachment. Which attachment is it?
Attachment 8.
Attachment to the resolution.
Attachment 8.
Attachment 8, so Section 4, Additional Regulations. There's a whole series of additional recommended, or this is what the applicant has requested, be regulations for the property, including hours of operations and restrictions on deliveries. And specifically, delivery vehicles larger than 20 feet in length would be required to park in the front area of the stores, and specifically says such vehicles shall not use the access road, which is adjacent to the north property line, for deliveries and/or parking. This, the existing shopping center is already developed, essentially with front loading, loading docks out into the parking lot.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, I thought I read something there, and you just, you found it for me. Thank you. Now, let's see, as I recall, the parking standards for restaurants is no different than the parking standards for retail or offices, or does that impact the parking ratio when we change the number of restaurants from the maximum of five to any number?
There is a separate parking ratio for restaurants in the community commercial zone. It's, I think it's per the seating, how many seats, and the square footage, the area that they're using for the servicing, for servicing the customers. And then, and for a standalone building in the CC zone, it says that it would be one stall per 50 square feet for restaurants. So the restaurant is different in the CC zone, but all of the other uses, the commercial uses such as retail, or I believe even community uses, are all parked at one, one stall per 200 square feet for the first 50,000 square feet, and that's why we had to make the correction, because I counted all of it at one per 250, but the one per 250 actually applies after that first 50,000. In the shopping center, a floor area.
And offices, the parking standard for office space, is that different than the retail space?
No, it's one per 250.
So those are both ones. So the impact if that place happened to become a dining mecca and fill up with restaurants, which I'm sure the landlord would love to see, do we have a parking problem?
We don't have a parking problem. Currently, there's a surplus. If we change to the CC zone, there are a surplus of 30 parking stalls.
But that doesn't account for the fact that we don't know how many restaurants are going to be in there, correct?
Correct.
Actually, through the chair, if I may, Commissioner Pickett, I'd like to just provide some additional clarification. So the proposed planned development zoning refers to the regulations that would apply to the community commercial zone in most cases, and specifically, there are actually special parking requirements for the community commercials that the applicant is requesting here, and it, there are uniform requirements for all commercial and community facilities. There's no specific different parking requirement for restaurants in this particular zone. The only difference is parking requirement for conditionally permitted uses in freestanding buildings. There, it's at the discretion of the Planning Commission. So if there's a use that comes in that requires a use permit, and it's in a freestanding building rather than a multi-tenant building, then the parking is again at the discretion of the commission. But otherwise, whatever use goes in there, the, for the first 50,000 feet of total square footage, it's, of all uses combined, it's one per 200, one space per 200 square feet of floor area. Everything above the first 50,000 square feet is one per 250. And so this is actually something very similar to our pedestrian retail district downtown here, where there's the concept of park once and walk, where it's assumed that some, a certain number of trips to this shopping center by car will actually be to visit multiple businesses, and that things basically kind of just average out to the particular, you know, to the requirements that I just described. And it's also worth noting that the current development of the shopping center, it's actually overparked by 30 spaces. So there's actually a surplus even to that requirement.
Yeah, but we, you mentioned, if it was in a freestanding building, it'd be subject to a CUP, but this new ordinance says that they are not subject to CUPs, correct?
They're requesting that, and... They're requesting that, and staff isn't supporting that. So we're supporting the rezone, but the CUP requirement is what we want to maintain for office and medical office uses. Are you talking about restaurants?
Restaurants.
Restaurants in a standalone building would require a use permit, and the note is still in there in the proposed PD.
So that would still be required?
Just the drive-through, they have striked out. So there'll be no drive-through restaurants in the shopping center.
No drive-through restaurants.
A restaurant in a freestanding building, so a single-tenant building, is conditionally, or under these proposed regulations, would be conditionally permitted. And as a conditionally permitted use in a freestanding building, the parking requirement would be at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure the landlord hopes he has a parking problem. Okay. I'm not really anxious about it, but I just wanted to confirm that I understood it. The last question is, you mentioned that some of the standards in the original PD zoning were based on concerns of the neighborhood. Have those concerns gone away? Or with the same neighborhood, it's the same shopping center?
I think that was...
Why would we dismiss that?
Well, many of the same conditions as Mr. Smith mentioned, Section Four, that says additional regulations, many of those are actually carried over from the existing PD, understanding that those were put in place because there were concerns from the neighborhood. One being the larger delivery vehicles have to access the shopping center or service the shopping center from the front of the building. And the loading area for both the anchor tenants is in the shopping center from the front of the building. So, no. And then the only thing that they're asking differently is the extension of one hour for the anchor tenant. But the incoming delivery hours and the in-store hours will remain the same as the existing PD for all of the tenants and uses except for the anchor tenants asking for one hour extension. Yeah.
Okay, great. That's all. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and the applicant has up to 15 minutes to give their presentation. So we'll welcome up the applicant. Are they online? You got to let them in? Oh, here we go. Yep, they're here.
Good evening. My name is Fred Witt. I am the president of DPI Retail, which is the managing agent of Citrus Marketplace. First of all, I want to thank Simmer for a great job. She's been phenomenal to deal with. I've been doing this for 30 years and I've never experienced so much support, really, from the city also and from Simmer. It's been great. Our goal here today is just one thing, and that is to try to be competitive. We want to have the same thing as others, and right now, we do not. Specifically, office and medical uses is the one that I really wanted to talk about more than anything. The CUP process for most tenants, if they know they have to get a CUP but they can go across the street, they're not going to even come. Whether it takes 60 days, whether it takes 90 days, you lose the time. We're not trying to make this an office complex or a medical complex. We're not trying to make it a restaurant, all restaurants either. We really want to keep it a traditional shopping center with an open mix, which also includes medical and office. Specifically, what I'm more focused on is the medical, like dentists, orthodontists, small urgent cares, chiropractors. We can't do those right now. And a CUP with a lot of those guys, they would not want to. They'll just go to orchards or somewhere else down the street. General offices, we're not going to build a second floor, so we won't be interested in putting offices up there. So we'd really like to have the flexibility to be able to just do deals with insurance agencies, real estate companies, banks, whatever, even H&R Block, anything that has an office. And all I want to say and really in conclusion is, again, the orchards across the street is allowed, per the current zoning, to lease space to all office and medical without any CUP. They currently have a few medical tenants such as Sutter Health... Whoa. Sutter Health, the joint chiropractics, elements, massage, and one medical. Those were all deals that came to us at one point and they went across the street because we had to see... At that point, we could not do it. So I'm just asking for an even playing field and hoping you will consider that. Other than that, I think the report was great and I recommend. But I really wish we could get the office and medical. I'm here for questions too, if you have any.
Great. Just hang out for one sec. Thanks so much. Any questions from the commissioners? All right. At this time, thank you. At this time, does any member of the public wish to provide public comments? We'll start with here in the chamber and then we'll go to online.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Oops, I actually hit the pause button on the thing. Actually, there's the representative of GoPuff wanted to finish off using the 15... Oh, here we go. She has a presentation, I believe.
Very good. Sorry about that.
And Ms. Sowers, I've been told by our person that you'll be able to share your screen for your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening. I am going to do my presentation. Can everyone see the screen? Presentation?
We can, yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Jordan Sowers. I am with GoPuff. I have a short presentation for you and am open to any questions. First question, what is GoPuff? GoPuff is a delivery service that brings essential items right to your doorstep using a hyper-local delivery approach. Some of the various products in which we serve are on your screen. Some fast facts about GoPuff. We were founded in 2013. We have a little bit over 10,000 employees. 3,500-plus products are offered. We invite new ones pretty frequently. In addition, we've just been introduced our fresh produce. We serve over 1,000-plus cities currently, delivering these essential items on demand. So we deliver a variety of products and usually operate 24/7 where able in hopes that we can as well in this location. We make delivery of everyday essentials for a flat fee of $2.95. There's never surge pricing within the 30-minute timeframe, so we try to get it under that 30-minute timeframe in that five-mile radius, as mentioned in the prior presentation. Some of the items in which we offer baby supplies, over-the-counter medication, cleaning supplies, home and office products, COVID tests during the pandemic, pet supplies, food and drinks of various sorts. Many of our customers like to make the approach that if you can't make a trip to the store for whatever reason, a sick child, you're feeling ill, it may be late, other stores are closed. We have this really innovative approach to be able to deliver these products to your doorstep. How it works, so if you have your app, everything is... If you have your phone, everything is pretty much app-based technology. You download the app, you type in your address, and based off of the location, you have various products in which we are able to provide pop-up on your app in various little tiles, as you can see on your screen. Something we like to be very specific on is that we like to celebrate local control and local awareness. So for instance, here in Denver, Colorado, we have a kombucha that's native to us, Boulder chip company, those type of options. We provide that within an app to support local businesses within the area. Just gives additional incentives and products that we would like to be able to provide to your constituents within your jurisdiction. Once the items are in the bag, it'll alert when we will be able to deliver them to you. Again, we try to make it within that 30-minute timeframe. You have an option of a tipping. All tips go completely to the driver. Again, our app-based fee is $2.95 regardless of if you spend $500 or $10. We make sure to hit that mark. Again, no surge pricing. And then you're able to track your order from the minute you order it to the end. Packing and delivery, our model is our order is placed through the app and received by the local, at the local facility. Workers at the facility pack the order. The order is then routed for delivery and placed in a bin for pickup by a driver partner. When the order is ready for pickup, an independently contracted driver picks it up and delivers it to the customer. In California in particular, in 2020, we acquired Bevmo. That's why GoPuff is in partnership with Bevmo. It's the leading specialty beverage retailer on the West Coast, as I'm sure you're aware. We work directly with local governments to be a collaborative partner in the community and bring essential items directly to our rapidly growing customer base. We now serve the community from nearly 100 locations across the state of California. Investing in our local economy within California, we are committed to participating in local hiring programs that support job growth and economic opportunity for our local residents. GoPuff donated $1 million to local health organizations working on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic and also donated $1 million to the Boys and Girls Club, Really Fun, to a matching program. Our unique delivery model has generated additional sales tax revenue for local governments, delivering a new source of revenues for cities. GoPuff is committed to working with local businesses to ensure that locally sourced products are a major part of our platform. So always open to new suggestions or a favorite snack that any of you may have to see we can feature it on our app-based technology. Approach your age-restricted sales with a delivery. We use a robust age verification ID scanning technology to help prevent age-restricted products from being delivered to minors. Number one is on-the-spot verification. Before an order is closed, the delivery partner must scan the customer's valid US government-issued ID. Optical scanning technology, using advanced optical scanning ID verification technology, the delivery partner must verify the ID at the site of the delivery, and a signature is required. If the ID is verified by the system, the order can be completed and a signature is captured. Delivery partner eligibility requirements. GoPuff requires all delivery partners delivering age-restricted products meet the following criteria. Age is critical for us. You must be at least 21 years of age. Training, complete alcohol beverage service training. It's an additional incentive to make sure that we are encapsulating all issues, taking them very seriously. And number three, delivery service agreement, sign GoPuff's alcohol delivery service policy. Security, again, with this location, it will be the same. Is adequate lighting maintained to ensure employees and driver partner's safety at all times? Outdoor security cameras that have footage stored for 30 days and monitored alarm system with a holdup panic button for employees in the case of any type of emergency. Again, we're looking to extend the deliveries of non-alcoholic items 24/7 and alcohol items until the 1:30 timeframe from this Bevmo location, currently permitted till 11:00. I say 1:30 to capture that 30 minutes between 2:00 AM to make sure that these products will be delivered by that timeframe at your 2:00 AM mark. Again, no change to walk-in sales hours at this Bevmo. We work forward to continue partnership with the city with this additional resource. Thank you so much for your time this evening and our viability in your community. Again, my name is Jordan Sowers. I am part of the GoPuff team. I'll make sure my information is provided to all of you in case there are other opportunities to partner aside from this presentation to be better stewards of your agenda and a better neighbor of your community.
Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah.
Nice stuff. Any questions about the business model or about GoPuff? Yes. Commissioner Strongman.
Yeah, probably directed towards your staff. And thank you for your presentation about GoPuff. It was very interesting. But my question's more about the CUPs. Is it true that the orchards, it's not required to have a CUP for medical?
That's correct. Office and medical office uses are permitted by right, but they do have a... It's a PD with a different general plan designation. It's mixed-use commercial, and this is general retail. And the general retail in the general plan specifically says that retail is encouraged on the ground floor and office uses on the second floor or above. So they do have a separate general plan designation.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll get back to, just prior to me cutting off GoPuff. Thank you again, Jordan, and see if any members of the public would like to comment on this application. We'll start in the chamber and then move to online. Friendly reminder, it's three minutes. So, thank you.
Okay. My name is John Scott. I live at 549 Banyan Circle, directly behind Bevmo. I didn't know any of the details of what was being proposed until I picked up the handouts tonight, but I just wanted to say a few things. My wife and I would like to make sure that that shopping center stays viable. However, there are some issues with that road in the back not being used the way the current PD says it's supposed to be used. We have seen occasional semis back there. The garbage containers that Republic picks up are supposed to be kept against the building, but it's more convenient for the operators, I guess, to put them against the back fences of the neighbors, which, you know, gives us potential rat problems and that sort of thing. The biggest concern we have with what's going on at Bevmo is we want to make sure that we don't have late-night activities in that alleyway with comings and goings at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. We already, as it stands today, have a lighting problem because the light in the back of Bevmo lights up my entire back part of my house. And so the bedrooms upstairs all have to have almost light-blocking shades on them just to be able to get some sleep. And then the last thing I want to talk about was if there are going to be a lot of restaurants in there, make sure that they're doing whatever is possible to control odors so that we don't have, you know, grease odors and whatnot coming through the whole Woodlands neighborhood. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scott. Anybody else here in the chamber want to step up? Okay. Anybody online?
Apologize for the delay. I'm switching between windows here. So I would ask if anybody attending via Zoom, if they wish to provide public comment, that they please press the raise hand button. And there is one attendee other than the applicant and a member of staff, and I'm not seeing them push the raise hand button. So it looks like we do not have any additional public speakers.
Okay, great. At this time, we'll ask if the applicant would like to come up and respond to a public comment or make a closing statement or call it a night. All right? We're good? Very good. We will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for any additional questions, deliberation, or perhaps a motion. Commissioner Pickett?
I have a question. There was a comment about the lighting, flooding the backyard, and a comment about the garbage cans, which I think are valid, and we've talked about those in other shopping centers in Sina Grande, which backs up to residential properties, and that's always been an issue. Is that something we can address in this application? Or is that something that just has to be the way it is? I mean, when this was developed, we didn't have the parking lot light standards that we have now, which require that they shine down, and we do a lot of light control in commercial developments, particularly in our residential places. Is that something we can address or discuss at this point?
So the existing plan development zone actually does have some provisions that are not in the proposed zoning specific to light. For example, number... Well, it was a regulation, number 10, I suppose, in the existing PD says, "Security lighting and other illumination of the parking area and buildings shall be shielded and shall not be directed on adjacent residential properties or onto abutting streets. All exterior lighting shall be subject to design review." That's, of course, for the parking area and buildings, but... Well, no, yeah, for the buildings. So it would appear that the existing lighting is out of compliance with that. And of course, the shopping center in its current iteration does date back a number of decades. And the buildings in question actually specifically referenced by Mr. Scott were dated back, I think, to the 1970s, although they were rem... by Mr. Scott were, date back, I think, to the 1970s, although they were remodeled. But, you know, it certainly would be within the purview of the planning commission to, basically amend the, you know, as part of their approval, as part of this commission's approval, or recommendation, I should say. I apologize. This is a recommendation to the city council. Could include in a recommendation to the city council that provisions for things such as that or the, you know, where garbage collection shall be located could be included and addressed.
Okay. That was my last question.
Vice Chair Ward.
So, this is for Simmer. I guess if we're trying, if the purpose of this rezoning is to try and make it competitive with the orchards and other shopping centers around, why would we not make it consistent with regard to the medical offices and the conditional use permits?
Well, okay, I can speak to that then. So, basically, what we're looking at, the orchard is kind of an outlier in terms of neighborhood shopping centers, if you would call it that. It's sort of a little bit of a different animal, but it's in the mixed-use commercial zoning and, or general plan designation, I should say, which is really a different creature than the, the general retail, and it's not adjacent to residential uses, or at least single-family neighborhoods, such as the Citrus Marketplace and basically all the other neighborhood shopping centers that we have within the city. And the intent of that general plan designation is really just exclusively residential rather, I mean, I apologize, retail. It's been a long day. The intent of the general retail designation is retail, whereas the intent of the mixed-use commercial emphasis designation is for a mixture of uses, which could include office. Staffs, from staff's perspective, one of our concerns with allowing medical uses by right is that, you know, one or two here and there, maybe in the corner, generally not a problem in terms of being conducive to the retail vitality of the shopping center, but without having any kind of limitations on the number, if they were to, if the tenant spaces were to, in the large part, transition into office uses, that would, that's generally not conducive to a retail environment, a successful and vibrant retail environment. And so, we're recommending that the requirement for a use permit be the same for basically all of the other neighborhood shopping centers in the city, with the exception of the orchards, which, again, is a little bit different in that a use permit be required.
But don't you think that, you know, an orthodontist office has less of an impact on the neighborhood than a restaurant or, you know, a different kind of business that would be open later?
I mean, in terms of impacts, yes, and I suppose that could be a situation, a consideration. Actually, I was thinking about something else when I started talking about being adjacent to residential. It's not really so much the issue here with regard to the use permit requirement for offices, really just maintaining the retail vitality of the site. Something that the commission may wish to consider, if this is something we're, you know, looking for options. Some of you may recall when we were reviewing the zoning for the West Downtown specific plan, this was several years ago, but the mixed-use commercial zoning, actually along Mount Diablo Boulevard, we were looking at it, it's normally fairly restrictive in allowing mostly just retail and restaurants on the ground floor in the MUC zone. And there was concern by this commission, however, that, well, along Mount Diablo Boulevard to the west of California Boulevard, it's not really a strong retail area and didn't want to have, didn't want to see a bunch of vacant retail spaces. So, in that case, there was actually a special provision for that particular area, and this may be something could be considered similar here in that allowed by right would be, you know, businesses, and I'm just reading from the MUC zone, this is just something to throw out there, but businesses whose primary activities involve walk-in customer visits, including but not limited to maintenance or repair service centers for small equipment, document preparation centers, real estate agencies, public offices for title companies, mortgage brokers, stockbrokers, et cetera, et cetera, allowed by right. So, if this commission is concerned about, or is not in agreement with staff's recommendation to just require a use permit across the board, throwing out as another possible option is to kind of differentiate, well, what type of office uses should be allowed by right versus still needing a use permit? Just throwing that out again.
I mean, I like the idea because it seems like, you know, we're trying to encourage a more viable economic situation for the shopping center, and the landlord or owner seems to know best what that is, and they're telling us that this restriction is making it harder for them rather than easier. So, it seems to be counter to the objective in terms of rezoning if we're too restrictive in that, or we're throwing up unnecessary obstacles that have been proven to be, that we don't need, and we have experience across the street, literally, to say, you know, it's working out okay there. So, that's my thought on that.
I think I'm hearing contradictory information. The draft of the PD zoning has offices, business, professional, it's not, the pages aren't numbered, so I don't know page it's on. Says offices, business, and professional. It has the L7 crossed out and has a P, which is a permitted use. So, there is no CUP for an.
So, the attachment is the applicant's proposal. They're proposing to use the CC zone as the, kind of the starting point for this planned development.
So, attachment eight is the applicant's.
Yes.
Then you got to go to the resolution.
Yes.
There was my, my.
And the last comment on the end of the resolution has staff saying no.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it's just staff's recommendation that the use permit be required for office uses.
Sorry. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from commissioners? Somebody like to?
I'll make another comment, and that is, I think we need to rethink what retail means. The world has changed a little bit in the last few years, and I think that anyone who was sitting on the sideline and watched the orchards get approved could have predicted that at some point in the future, we'd be sitting here talking about citrus. And, you know, I'm glad that we're having this conversation this way, and we're not talking about putting, you know, 300 or 400 homes on this location. Not that I'm opposed to new housing, but I think, you know, this is a traditional retail location, and it's in a very competitive location with two other major shopping centers around the corner. I think we should be open to the applicant's request. And I personally, again, this is just a recommendation to the city council, I would recommend that we approve the resolution with the applicant's request and remove the note, the change that staff has requested. I understand the interest and continuity of planning regulation, and I understand a variety of historic concerns. I just live in a world where sometimes we put up so much bureaucracy, we get in our own way, and I'm willing to take a risk on this one. And it's really not me, we're just making a recommendation, you know, to the council, and they're going to do the heavy lifting. Anyway, that's my two cents. Before a motion gets made, I just wanted to put that out there and say that perhaps Vice Chair Ward and I are probably in alignment in our thoughts here.
I'm going to tail in on that. I agree. I think that the introduction of the orchards in that neighborhood changed the dynamics of the neighborhood, and I think that we've already, in other cases, we've acknowledged the change in the economic environment, and I think we want to do what we can do to support this, this shopping center. I don't really have any objection to allowing offices or medical uses without a conditional use permit. I think we need to do what we can to help the vitality of this. It's beneficial to the neighborhood to keep this as a viable shopping center. They got a hu, I mean, they're like 60% vacant right now. That's huge. And I think, I don't have any fear of it being misused. That's a good place for a retail, small neighborhood-serving retail shopping center. You're going to, the demand is for retail, but some people are going to want to put a little office in it. I had an office over in Encina Grande for years. It was great. Old, stuck in the back, something they couldn't lease out. But, you know, I mean, I would support allowing offices and medical use without the CUP, and I think we should be open-minded and do what we can to help support the vitality of the shopping center.
I concur.
Okay.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues down here, and I'd also, if I remember some of the public comments when the orchard was approved, was that Nob Hill was doomed at that point, so.
And here we are.
And here we are.
So, what would, what would this resolution look like if we wanted to do that? Are we just getting rid of Section 3, or is it something more nuanced than that?
Let me pull it up here. In Section 3, the decision, you would basically just end that sentence at attachment eight. So, planning commission in the back, planning commission hereby recommends that the city council adopt the draft planned development zoning ordinance, attachment eight. And as Commissioner Pickett pointed out, attachment eight, as currently drafted, allows it by right.
Okay, and so then deleting paragraph one under Section 3 entirely?
Correct, correct. The other issue that I heard one or more commissioners raise that I just wanted to remind the commission of, if you did want to address the lighting issue, as Andy Smith pointed out, the existing PD does have a provision regarding security lighting and other illumination that shall not be directed on adjacent residential properties. And if the.
So, where would we put that?
So, if the commission wished, you could add, you could reintegrate that section.
So, we don't have to remove with the following change? We can keep that and add this as a following change?
You could do that, or in the actual PD, in the draft ordinance, you could add it as number six in Section 4. All the, that's all the red type on the draft ordinance.
How does that play out in reality when we're changing the, you know, or changing the rule regarding lighting? Is that expecting the applicant to go change lighting, or?
No, the rule currently exists, the, the rule that we were, that was discussed, that we can read in that, the current ordinance exists currently.
Oh, I see.
And so, what's happening is the applicant is proposing some new, some changes, and we're saying that we're willing to accept the applicant's changes. In doing so, because he used a different document, that went away.
Got it.
And so, I think, based on community concerns and what we're hearing, we're going to add that back in, and it's really not, shouldn't be affecting the applicant's property because it already is a requirement. Whether or not it's enforced or some additional lighting was added by Bevmo for security reasons or what have you, that's hard to say, but I don't see that that changes anything. In fact, it protects the communities to, you know, from losing a right they currently have.
Is that fair? You concur?
Oh, I mean, is that a factually accurate statement? Yes.
Okay, very good. So, we'll entertain a motion for the recommendation. We need a motion for the recommendation, right? We don't just tell you.
Right, yeah, you have two resolutions, and the first one is the approval of the negative declaration.
Right.
All right, so why don't we make, I'll make a motion.
Can I clarify that for the record? It is late. I said approval of the neg-dec, but you're actually recommending approval to the city council.
But you got to start with that one.
Yes, yes, but I just want to be clear for the record, we're not approving it tonight, we're recommending approval to the city council.
Exactly, and we're not actually discussing any changes to the first one, so, correct, the first resolution regarding the negative declaration is as written. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution recommending adoption of a negative declaration, application number Y21-117, Citrus Marketplace Rezone.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we call for the vote?
So, did you get the language, the security lighting language in there?
That's in the next resolution. Okay, this is just the end, okay, go.
So, on the motion that's been seconded, Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
Chair Riser?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, well, I'm on a roll. So, I'd like to make a motion now to adopt a resolution recommending adoption of the planned development ordinance, application number Y21-117, Citrus Marketplace Rezone, with the changes we discussed. First of all, putting back in the existing requirement with regard to lighting on adjacent properties, and secondly, eliminating, in Section 3 decision, we want a period after attachment eight and deleting the entire rest of that section.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we call for the vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
Chair Riser?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, I'm sorry, who was, who was the seconder on that one? Mr. Pickett, thank you.
All right, next up, commission considerations, and we're not going to talk about ours this, we're going to wait next time around, so I asked the commission secretary if we could punt that to the next meeting.
It'll only be 8:52 if you do that soon.
Exactly. So, no commission considerations. Commission member and staff reports or announcements?
None for staff.
Okay. With that, thanks everyone for their time and participation. Thank the staff, thank the commissioners, and thanks the folks who came. We are adjourned at 9:52.